All right, folks. Welcome to the Long Beach City Council Meeting. It is May 6th and 5:30. Let's go ahead and call the meeting of the Long Beach City Council to order with roll call, please.
Councilwoman Zindejas.
Present.
Councilwoman Allen.
Here.
Councilwoman Supranov.
Here.
Councilwoman Kerr.
Present.
Councilwoman Sorrow.
Present.
Vice Mayor Yaranga.
Councilwoman Thrash Entuk.
Here.
Councilmember Rexody.
Mayor Richardson.
All right, folks. Welcome to the Long Beach City Council meeting. It is May 6th and 5:30. Let's go ahead and call the meeting of the Long Beach City Council to order with roll call, please.
Councilwoman Zindejas.
Present.
Councilwoman Allen. Councilmember Duggan.
Here.
Councilman Supranov.
Here.
Councilwoman Kerr.
Present.
Councilwoman Sorrow.
Present.
Vice Mayor Yoranga. Councilwoman Thrash Entuk.
Here.
Councilmember Rexody. Mayor Richardson.
I am here.
We have a forum.
All right, thank you. We're going to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Duggan.
Let's first take a moment of silence remembering those who have gone before us. Then we'll stand for the... Let's take a moment of silence. All right, please stand if you are able, right hand over your heart.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay, so just a few announcements. Vice Mayor Yoranga is attending the Coastal Commission meeting, so he won't be with us this evening. Councilmember Allen is attending a day of action in Sacramento with Southern California Association of Governments where she was named president last week. So congratulations to Vice Mayor Allen. So neither of them will be able to participate in tonight's region, but we certainly appreciate their advocacy on behalf of Long Beach at those two regional bodies. It's also, we want to wish everyone happy Mother's Day because Mother's Day is this week. So we want to start off the meeting by just recognizing all of you and our council colleagues who are mothers, so Happy Mother's Day to everyone. I'll also announce that this May, we're hosting Long Beach's Annual Spring Cleaning. We just kicked that off. This is a call to action. All of our city departments, public works, and everyone's out doing their part, but this is a teamwork, right? So we want to encourage our residents, our neighborhood leaders, who already do a lot, to go on our city's website and put your neighborhood cleanups there so we can support it. We can all get out to all of our nine council districts and/or sign up if you don't have already a neighborhood cleanup. You can go visit our website, longbeach.gov/springcleaning to find a neighborhood cleanup near you. We'll go ahead and get started. We have three presentations today and then we'll go through our agenda. First is Harvey Milk Park Promenade, Harvey Milk Promenade Park Equality Plaza 2025 Honorees, and we're going to go to Councilmembers and Dejas.
Thank you very much, Mayor. This is one of my favorite times, especially here in May. Prioritizing inclusion and equity in our city is not a catchphrase, but a strategic commitment of investment in a better future for all of Long Beach. We know that all of our diverse communities that make up our city are very invaluable and they bring invaluable contributions to our local economy, our identity and culture as a city. Building a safe Long Beach includes building a safe Long Beach for our LGBTQ+ communities. An attack on one community is an attack on all of us and an attack on the safety and well-being of our communities. That is why I am so excited and so proud to continue having this honor of hosting the annual Harvey Milk Park Equality Plaza, Equality Plaza Honorees. And I'm so happy to have you guys here today and if you... I'd like to invite you to come to the mic and say a few words.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much, Councilwomen. My name is Cory Allen. I am the current chair of, yes, the longest committee name in Long Beach right now, the Harvey Milk Promenade Park Equality Plaza Selection Committee, where we get to... We work throughout the year to nominate and select LGBTQ leaders from across the city who have done work within our community to go on the Equality Wall. And so we hope you will all join us. Our celebration is also this weekend, Saturday, May 10th at 11:00 a.m. Also, Happy Mother's Day for our Mexican mothers on Saturday and Mother's Day on Sunday. It's also Pride Kickoff Weekend, so we will start our Pride Week with this ceremony. And now we're going to have some of our committee members read you some brief bios about the honorees that we are recognizing this year. So we're going to start with Marsha Navy.
Mayor and council members, I'm very happy to introduce to you today Larry Hebert. He is being honored along with his longtime partner, John Garcia. They both owned Ripple's nightclub here in Long Beach for decades, which is sort of a famous spot. And while they both retired recently and the club has been closed, we certainly remember it very fondly. Unfortunately, John Garcia passed away on May 7th.
March 7th.
I'm sorry, March 7th. Thank you, Larry. So I'm going to let Larry say a few words now about John and their time here in Long Beach. Thank you.
Thank you, Marsha. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd just like to say a few things about, mostly about John, not me. And thank you, Marsha. We've been together since August 17th, 1974, till March 7th, when he passed away. It's going on 51 years. And he had started a lot of different things here in Long Beach. He started the LBCBN, which is now a community. It was Long Beach Community Business Network, and I don't know what it's called. Now I forget. He started Pet Walk to go with AIDS Walk. He donated monies and time to the charities, to the hospices, the churches, the food banks, customers, employees, families, friends, and neighbors. He took care of everybody, and I helped him along the way. I always stayed in the background. He created a safe place for all people to be themselves and to feel welcomed and to be safe. He... We had Long Beach's most popular gay bar ever, and it was a time when disco was big and we were all having a great time. I was 22, and now I'm 73 on Saturday, on the 10th. So we had the nightclub. We turned it into also a cabaret and had entertainment. And then we bought the liquor store behind because we owned the land, so we took it over when they left. Let's see. It was a journey that you can't compare to. It was a wonderful life. It had its ups and downs, like any relationship, but we made it work. And I wouldn't change a thing. No other bar or owner in Long Beach had the reputation we had, and none ever will, I think. I think that time is gone from bars being, you know, safe havens and places for people to go. It was a golden time and a fantastic, fabulous ride, and I have to say I miss him terribly. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff, and members of the public. My name is Raoul Anorve. I'm a founding member and committee member, and I have the honor to introduce Kevin Geary tonight. Unfortunately, Kevin could not be here with us tonight, so I'll just share a little bit about him. He's a lifelong educator, activist, and one of the early trailblazers in Long Beach's LGBTQ community. In the 1990s and 2000s, when it wasn't easy to be out, to be an out gay man in Long Beach, Kevin stood boldly at the forefront of our city and movement. As president of the Long Beach Lambda Democratic Club, he fought for representation, equality, and made sure our voices were heard in local and national politics. But Kevin's leadership extended far beyond titles. He served on the Lambda Democratic Club for eight years, led Lambda's Human Rights Awards Banquet, chaired the former AIDS Walk Long Beach, led the GLS Caucus at the Teachers Association of Long Beach, and contributed to the LGBT History Project at the Long Beach Historical Society. And this is just a selection of highlights of his contributions. As a mentor, activist, and now in his 24th year of teaching, his work continues, and so does his legacy. His courage and compassion exemplify the leadership and excellence worthy of induction to Equality Plaza at Harvey Milk Park. I hope you'll join us Saturday. Kevin will be there. And now you'll hear from my committee member, Deb Cahow Kelly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor, councilpeople. Thank you. Today, we proudly honor Issa McKinley. Issa McKinley Cueros Rosed, a beloved community leader, friend, and business partner. We unexpectedly... We didn't expect this, but Issa unexpectedly passed away this past January, leaving behind a powerful legacy of love, inclusion, and service. Issa, known for his unwavering commitment to his community, made a profound impact on the city of Long Beach. In 2014, alongside his mother, Rosio, and sister, Josie, he opened The B Room, a family-run barber shop that quickly became a cornerstone of downtown. The B Room was more than just a business. It blossomed into a cherished queer safe space, a refuge where LGBTQ+ individuals could gather, express themselves freely, and feel at home. Soon after Issa launched It's a Drag to Give, a groundbreaking event that merged drag performance with philanthropy, celebrating queer culture while raising vital funds for local nonprofits, supporting children, the unhoused, and the LGBTQ community. Issa said, quote, "The power of It's a Drag is bringing people from different groups together to celebrate inclusion, diversity, and love." His advocacy didn't stop there. Issa was a passionate supporter of immigrant rights, supporting and working with the Long Beach Immigrant Rights Coalition to make our city more compassionate and equitable. He often said, "The only way to successfully is by giving back to your community." Issa lived that truth every day through his work, his art, and his heart. Today and Saturday, we will affirm his legacy of kindness, community building, and unapologetic Excuse me, sorry about that. He lives in the spirit of Long Beach. His absence is deeply felt, but his legacy will live forever and will forever be remembered. And his sister, Josie, and mom are here.
I just want to thank everybody for the continuous support and, you know, the honor. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Josie and Rosio. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
All right, Rosio?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Cory?
Hi, me again, Deb Cahow Kelly. I'm here to present another inductee, Dr. Maria Cartier. Dr. Maria Cartier is a poet, playwright, scholar, and lifelong activist, whose work has preserved and elevated LGBTQ+ history through art, education, and public storytelling. A Long Beach resident of over 20 years, Maria has taught queer studies and women and gender studies for three decades, inspiring thousands of students to engage in real-world activism and civic participation. She is the author of the groundbreaking book, a seminal work on lesbian bar culture as sacred place, and is currently co-producing a documentary based on it. Maria's leadership has brought LGBTQ+ visibility to academic institutions, artistic platforms, and grassroots movements. Her public access show, Homo Files Present, the Dyke Dive Podcast, and her proactive art installations have all pushed boundaries and amplified queer voices, especially those too often left out. Whether directing activist theater in prisons, archiving community stories, or mentoring future leaders, Maria's work bridges generations and ensures that LGBTQ+ stories are not only remembered, but celebrated. She doesn't speak because it's easy. She speaks because it's necessary. Dr. Maria Cartier's life, work is the embodiment of the Harvey Milk spirit: bold, unapologetic, and rooted in justice and visibility. Thank you. Next will be Cory Allen.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Our very last one, and I know we're going to have everybody come up to take a picture, is Alexandra Billings, who is a trans activist, author, and educator as a professor. And from her trailblazing roles in Transparent to her history-making run on Broadway in Wicked, Alexandra has shattered ceilings for trans performers. She teaches at USC and has been an advocate for those living with HIV and is a Long Beach resident, and I'm proud to say also is our first trans person to be recognized on our wall this year. So we continue to make strides in that representation. So thank you all for indulging us in hearing about the stories of our LGBTQ community. And I think we'll all come up and take a picture now.
All right. Well, I want to first congratulate the Planning Committee, the longest committee title in Long Beach. We want to thank you and congratulate you on a really thoughtful slate of honorees this year, very well-respected, very well-known. I know and have met, I think, everyone who's been an honoree this year, and I think a lot of thought and care has gone into that. And so congratulations to you on continuing this tradition and continuing to grow this tradition. And we want to... We have certificates for you, so if you want to come on down, we'll come take a photo.
Yes. And also, I just wanted to say thank you so much to the committee as well. Like the mayor said, I... These individuals that are going to be honored are truly our heroes for our LGBTQ+ community, and they will be joining the rest of the one... The rest of our heroes that we have on the wall this Saturday. So don't miss out. I invite you to come join us. And at this time, we'd invite everyone to come take a picture with us, please.
All right. Well, we will now set up for our next presentation, Building Safety Month with Community Development Department. Mr. Modica. Or, yes, Mr. Modica.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Richardson and council members. My name is Ron Takiguchi. I am the interim superintendent of building in the Community Development Department and pleased to present before the City Council a recognition of the month of May as Building Safety Month. Building and safety is a final step in the development process, confirming compliance in building design and construction. The 77 professionals in the Building Bureau include our certified permit technicians, customer service representative, licensed plant check engineers, and specialty-certified building inspectors, of which several are here today, and all of whom have the responsibility of providing the safeguards for the protection of public health, safety, and the general welfare, including in building construction and occupancy. Our staff members play an important role in keeping Long Beach citizens safe through our enforcement of state and local building codes and standards. In addition to a building structural system, we verify compliance of supportive electrical, mechanical, and plumbing systems and accessibility to ensure equal facilitation for persons with disabilities. The thousands of permits we issue annually are to assist homeowners, business owners, merchants, and the public in achieving compliance and leading to the final certificate of occupancy. As facilitators in the building and construction process, we work with developers and builders in providing housing in our city and just sharing some of the active construction projects presently under construction, including the largest construction project in Long Beach, the Elekson West End Mixed Use Project on Broadway adjacent to the World Trade Center, which will add an additional, which add 600 residential units to our city. Also, the 163 multifamily apartment complex on Long Beach Boulevard and the Habitat for Humanity Project on 14th Street, which will provide a home for 36 Long Beach residents. Our assistance for these and thousands of other projects start at our permit center, where we provide over-the-counter plan review, virtual counter-assistance, and hosting open house events. Our support helps businesses open the doors and plays a vital role in the local economy. Our assistance leads to the completion of single-family homes, multifamily apartments and condominiums, and affordable housing projects, providing Long Beach residents with a home while allowing a safe environment in building occupancy. We also support innovative technologies and seek alternatives to energy efficiency and sustainable practices. And importantly, we help preserve the historic character of Long Beach through adaptive reuse and the reconstruction and remodeling of existing designated historic resources. Building Safety Month is an international event, recognized worldwide as promoted by the International Code Council, or ICC, the publisher of the Building and Fire Codes. Here from ICC is License Engineer and Government Relations Regional Manager, Ms. Karen Beebe, to say a few words.
Thank you, Ron, and good evening, Mayor Richardson and City Council members. It's an honor for me to be here this evening in recognition of the City of Long Beach's Buildings Bureau as they are celebrating Building Safety Month. This is the 45th year that ICC has had Building Safety Month. Because of all the work that you just saw, Ron, presenting, it often goes unnoticed if there isn't an issue. And gladly to say that you guys are successfully building and creating the sustainable, affordable construction in your city. And you're on the cutting edge of adopting modern building codes here in the city of Long Beach. I'm, as Ron noted, the Government Relations Regional Manager for ICC based in San Diego, also a California licensed engineer. So I know from my heart where we're coming from in California and the hard work that we have in building resilient construction. In fact, FEMA noted that with every $1 invested in modern building codes actually saves $11. And if all of the states around the country adopted the modern building codes that you adopt here in the city of Long Beach, we would save over $600 billion by the year 2060. So kudos to the City of Long Beach Building Bureau and the recognition of Building Safety Month. Congratulations and thank you.
On behalf of our Community Development Director, Christopher Koontz, and the many dedicated professionals in the Building Bureau, we would like to thank the residents and the members of the Long Beach community. And to you, Mayor Richardson, a thank you as well. And to the members of the City Council for this proclamation, recognizing May as Building Safety Month. And we'd be so honored to have a photo with all of you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Ron, for the presentation. Let's hear it for the Building Bureau in our Community Development Department. So we do have a certificate for you. If you would like to come down, if you want to bring your crew, you're more than welcome. All right. Next up, we're going to, on our Legacy Business Program, City Manager.
Yes, we'll bring up our Economic Development Department. This is a great new program where we get to recognize our legacy businesses. And so I will turn it over to the team for the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for taking this time to recognize the Legacy Business Program and the businesses that we'll recognize this evening. We're excited to recognize and present this newly certified Legacy Businesses that span...
Julian. That's where we give our presentations, buddy. This isn't a staff report. This is a presentation. Come on down.
Thank you, Mayor. You're 100% right.
You're right. Don't be shy. We're here to celebrate our legacy businesses. We want you to stand up front.
I'm done for some good celebration. Let's do it.
That's right. Okay, let's start from the top.
All right. So Honorable Mayor and Council members, thank you for having us today and making the space and time to recognize, one, the Legacy Business Program itself, and then also, two, the businesses within this program that are going to be newly recognized this evening. So saying that, you know, Long Beach is home to several historic and culturally significant establishments here, not only in Long Beach, but that also impact the region. And they span across all industries, right? You know, oftentimes we think about just the food service industry, retail, but it really goes far beyond that into, you know, recognizing our industrial manufacturing history, aviation, of course, we always talk about that, hospitality and tourism. So these 20 businesses that are being recognized tonight, you know, we believe as staff, having vetted them and seeing, you know, their qualifications and eligibility for the program, really do a great job representing the best of Long Beach, you know, entrepreneurs. I always call them our hustlers of the hustlers because they put it all on the line. You know, they put up their 401K, their retirement. They put up their homes oftentimes. So, because they believe in this dream in their business owners and entrepreneurs. So this is a very special program that allows us to say, you know, thank you for all the hard work and for making our corridors a unique corridors all throughout Long Beach. So with that being said, I'm going to pass over to Julio, our business liaison, who really spearheaded the launching of the program. And before I do that, just, I do want to thank the Long Beach Heritage because they're the ones that did start the program. And we've been working closely with them to hand it over and to continue this program and enrich it and build off of their foundation. So thank you. I'll pass over to Julio.
All right, let's see the clicker here. So the Legacy Business Program aims to preserve the character and cultural identity of Long Beach. This program really is to recognize and promote and provide a system of support for our legacy businesses where focus is for meaningful employment and has tourism. And how does the program aim to reach these goals? The program includes a promotional, technical, and financial assistance, you know, through a list of our program registry. We have a support systems, marketing toolkit, also business liaison service, so one-on-one support as well. So this Legacy Business Program is really to provide a system of support for our legacy businesses that are providing such a cultural impact in our community and need that extra support, extra recognition. And it provides a vehicle for us to promote and really push these businesses and showcase what they do for Long Beach. So what is the Long Beach Legacy Business? So for the program, we built a criteria. Long Beach Legacy Businesses are at least 10 years established here in Long Beach and have made an impact in the community through the sense of history in the surrounding neighborhood, have a distinctive architecture. They support the cultural life in Long Beach and actively pursue equitable, inclusive, and sustainable community efforts. And with that, I'd like to say that we have 20 businesses that we have newly certified as Long Beach Legacy Businesses. It's a great, it's with great privilege and honor to mention these businesses here that have met that criteria for Long Beach Legacy Business. And if I may, I'd like to name these businesses to be recognized here. So Cisa Breke Ambiance Skincare, Taco Shore, Deep Blue Swim School, Dominico's Molly Moon Salon, Heather Art Chamber, CPA Incorporated, Glassstones Long Beach, Gems and Jewels Fine Jewelry, Miguel Hidalgo Soccer League, Live With Ease Wellness Center, Mike Shaft Bar, Assistance League of Long Beach, Long Beach Ballet for the Child, Mark Schneider Fine Jewelry Legends, Riveros Premier Nursing Service, Schooner or Later. I'd like to highlight these newly certified Legacy Businesses. And I'll pass it down to Julian.
Yes, so there's some of those pictures here, just, you know, again, just kind of highlighting the businesses that Julio just, you know, recognized here. So I have Live With Ease, you know, and then, you know, the ballet here has been longtime contributing member for the arts, Deep Blue Swim School. They've been helping children to learn how to swim, you know, in areas of Long Beach that typically don't have that opportunity. So it's really cool, again, to just recognize the longstanding presence here in the community. And with that being said, we say thank you for your time. And I think we have the vast majority of the businesses that are here to be recognized by the council and the mayor tonight.
All right, great. Well, we're gonna, we are gonna bring you all up and celebrate. First of all, congratulations to all the newly appointed, certified, right? Right? I think that, is this like our third cohort? Second?
Second cohort.
Right, right. And I think this is the first time we brought them all down to the City Council. We didn't do that before. I think we did something at Roxanne's last year, right? So congratulations to all of you. I know Councilmember Zindehas wants to say something.
Yes, I just want to say thank you, Julian. Thank you, Julio, for identifying such amazing Legacy Businesses throughout the city. I think that it's so important that we recognize and that we support the contributions that they make to our city. I know that the list is big, and so congratulations to each and every one of you. I'm particularly very excited for For the Child, which is an agency, yes, if you guys can say hi, which is an agency that just celebrated its 50th year here in the city of Long Beach, providing help and assistance to children and the families. So thank you for recognizing all of these businesses. I'm honored to sit on For the Child's Board and very honored that that's where I found out about them being recognized as a Legacy Business was at my board meeting. So I was really thrilled that they were included. So thank you very much and congratulations to all of the honorees tonight.
Thank you. We have a list of council members now. Councilmember Supernaw.
Thank you, Mayor. The original Legacy Group was mentioned tonight by the presenters. And I just wanted to include that we have Lee Fukai, Manu Eichler, and Joe Mello in the audience tonight. So thank you all for being here.
Thank you, Councilmember Duggan.
Congratulations to all the Legacy Businesses. Appreciate the work that's gone into this. I think it's important businesses are recognized for their longevity and their contribution to the community. And I want to especially thank all the Third District Legacy Businesses. So appreciative of you being in the community and, but congratulations to all of the Legacy Businesses.
All right. Well, Legacy Businesses are an important part of our social fabric in Long Beach. It's important that we had our own program in Long Beach to recognize them. Our city has an annexation history, you know, some parts of our city are older than others. And so what is a legacy in central Long Beach? Like VIP Records or in East Long Beach, like Schooner or Later may be very different in North Long Beach, like Sal's Gumbo Shack or Robert Earl's Barbecue. But having our local way of recognizing them says they're a part of our culture here in Long Beach. Like, what would Long Beach be without Joe Josts, right? So this is an opportunity for us as a city to lift that up, identify them, and also support them so they continue their legacy here in the city of Long Beach. So all the Legacy Businesses who are here, the honorees could come forward. We want to recognize you.
And if you could, meet Julio and I out, outside the exit here of the chambers, and we'll have your certificate for you to pick up. Thank you.
All right. We can continue these photos outside. In the lobby. All right. Thank you. You guys ready to start the council meeting now? All right. Let's go ahead and pull up the consent calendar. Minus item 13, please. Okay, the consent calendar's been moved in second. Is there any public comment on consent?
There's no public comment on consent.
All right. Members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried.
All right. We now will handle item 13, please. Actually, it's just being withdrawn, right? So, we actually don't need to handle item 13.
We're going to be asked for this to be withdrawn, spend a little more time with the council district on this, and then we'll come back later.
So, we're just going to withdraw that from the agenda.
Oh, hey, Mayor. I just noticed on the last vote, I think it shows me is not here.
We, we've.
All right. We got you from the record.
Yep.
Thank you for noting. All right. Let's have our close, our report out from closed session.
In the matter of Ponton versus City of Long Beach, the city has settled the matter for $1.95 million. The matter of Thompson versus City of Long Beach has settled for $154,750. End of report.
All right. Thank you. Well, now to go to general public comment number one. Just waiting on the system to queue. All right. So, it looks like we have 10 members of the public signed up to speak. You each have three minutes. When I read your name, please come forward. Anthony Holmes, John English, Cindy Sahagan. I always say that wrong, Cindy. Please forgive me. Kenea Williams, Pierre Tolliver, Lilio Campo, Laura Mozo, Diana Norman, Gina Kim, and Martin Taronis. All right. Anthony is up first. And after Anthony is John, and then Cindy.
Free Rodney Hinton. I actually came to speak to Don McIntosh, but I see she's not here today. So, I'll speak to April Walker. You know, April, I don't come messing with these people. They come bothering me. Keep coming at me, keep coming at me. I mind my business, you know? I call at the bully table. I'm not going to say you are a bully, but Tom Odeka and Don McIntosh. Like, what would you do if you experienced the same stuff over and over and over and over again? You bring it to the council attention. They do, they do nothing. And with Rex, you lied to the public April 22nd about Christopher Garner retired a couple of years ago. He retired last year. And y'all brought him back when all he did was argue back and forth with people on social media about me in the Refuge Department, when he was supposed to be running the department, making $335, $34,813.06. But yet and still, he's worrying about the Refuge Department, but not worrying about his department that he have a sex offender working in that department. And the retaliation y'all put against me. Treat me like a criminal, interrogate me, hire outside investigators to come talk to me about a sex offender, level four sex offender. So, I cannot let it go. I told myself in 2023, when I come up here and I step into the light, I come to win. I did not come to lose. So, I encourage everybody that come down here and speak on the unjust that goes on in the city and the council members allow it. I can care less if you, you guys all went in the back. I'll still be up here speaking. I come here to speak to the public, although I direct certain stuff to you, Rex, because it's, it's, it's a shame what goes on. I see the building in safety. They had no black people working in that department. They just came up here. And it's still a lot of corruption that's going on in the Refuge Department. You guys have a nice day.
Our next speaker is John English.
I have a few words to say, but I want to start out by saying that if we are allowed the CPU license for our new location, we're going to have our Sunday morning prayer service every week from eight to 10. So, good evening, Mayor and Council. And congrats to Cindy for her award. That's District Two. This is my partner, Marcos Hernandez, and we are the Eight. That's what we're going to call our business, again, provided we have the blessing. We're on the Broadway Corridor at 4711. 1711, correction. And if we granted our business permit, our priorities of our parent company, which is automated entertainment for this new location, we're going to call the Eight, will be to improve community involvement in our business with events and programs of a, at the sober location. We'll have food, drinks, games, and discussion every day from eight to eight, the Eight. We can speak. We hope to, we're hoping to help Long Beach fill vacant buildings and storefronts with our councilperson Cindy Allen. We want to continue working on the streets, like the downtown program post-COVID, the sidewalk, with the sidewalk dining, social events and stuff. We want to help improve cleanliness to the space of the Broadway Corridor and public access to a more welcoming environment. We want to welcome the hundreds of dog owners and dog walkers that come by the location. We've been working cleaning up the property for the last 90 days, and it's amazing how many people have dogs in Long Beach. Marcos has.
So, just a heads up. My name is Marcos Hernandez. I'm John's partner. We currently own Good Times Billiards in Lakewood, California. We've been in operation for about seven years now, post-COVID. And we're looking at Seven Ten Eleven as our new location for a sober, living, third space style poolroom. Right now, we are working with Cindy to hopefully help us with some of the zoning. But we are just trying to put our foot in the table, or I'm sorry, our foot into Long Beach because 67% of our customers are from Long Beach. And we think that it's time that Long Beach gets its own poolroom.
Are your times concluded?
Or at least its own place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for, for being here. All right. Next is Cindy.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Cindy Sagun. I am the CVI Program Coordinator at Centro CHA. On behalf of the One Cola, One Long Beach Collaborative, I am here to bring to your attention that on April 22nd, 2025, the Trump Administration announced the termination of certain Community Violence Intervention and Prevention CVI PI grants. These grants established under the Bipartisan Safer Communities Act have been instrumental in supporting local organizations that addresses violence through public health strategies. This abrupt cancellation of these funds threaten to disrupt critical frontline interventions, jeopardize employment within these organizations, and dismantle programs vital to communities disproportionately affected by violence. What is at cost is that these programs are proven to save lives. They strengthen neighborhoods and provide pathways out of violence for those who need it most. We know that canceling, the canceling of awards from the Department of Justice for CVI PI threatens progress and puts communities at risk. As y'all may know, in 2022, Centro CHA was awarded a DOJ CVI PI grant for $1.1, $1.5 million. While Centro CHA was a lead agency for this grant, we, this was a gift to the city of Long Beach. Not only has this collaborative, we were able to formalize the collaborative One Long Beach with partners that we all know, like the African American Cultural Center, the United Community, Justice for Murdered Children, and more organizations. I have presented to y'all a few slides of the impact that we've had through the One Long Beach, where between 2023 and 2024, we were able to award 11 organizations $1,096,000. And in April 2024, an additional One Long Beach Economic Justice Mini Grant funding opportunity gave more organizations here in the city of Long Beach $300,000. This impact by the Trump Administration and the federal level impacts the city of Long Beach. And so, I'm here today with our community to, to advocate. We need to protect CVI, especially in our communities here in Long Beach because the work, the work proves that it saves lives. And so, I'm here to ask that as y'all, you know, do your proposals for the budgeting for our next fiscal year, to please consider CVI because there are a lot of programs here that benefit our youth and provide opportunity to our communities. And I want to just say thank you to Councilwoman, to Nua and Dr. Joanie for your continuous support and having representations at our One Long Beach meetings this year. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Ms. Williams.
Good evening. My name is Kenea Williams. I am a student at Cabrillo High School that attends the Safe Passages Program. I'm here to ask that the city advocates for CVI programs and to safe passages in Centro CHA, et cetera. To me, Safe Passages is an amazing organization that helps students be safe and educates them on problems such as abuse in relationships, consent, and bullying. I think this is a great extracurricular for students to participate in, to learn to be better people. Safe Passages provides a place for students to be rather than engaging in negative activities. They encourage students to build resumes, partake in positive activities, and more. Safe Passages is ignored, is an organization that leads students down a better path. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Next is Pierre.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Pierre Tolliver, and I'm a student at Cabrillo High School. I'm here to ask you to support funding for CVI programs such as Safe Passages and Centro CHA. CVI programs have made a real difference in my life. Safe Passages, for example, has helped me feel safe at school. Their workshops teach us how to deal with tough situations. One lesson that stuck with me was about being a good bystander, to speak up or get help instead of just watching when something bad happens. Programs like these give students like me a safe place to be at, support, and tools to make better choices. CVI programs help prevent violence before it happens. That's why I believe they should be funded and supported. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Next is Lilia. After Lilia is Laura, and then Diana.
Good afternoon or good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Lilio Campo, a longtime resident of First District and a mother of two students at Cabrillo High School that benefit from the Safe Passage. And I'm here to ask you and tell you about how the funding cuts impact our community. Not that you don't know, but I just want to remind you that violence is now the leading cause of death of all children in America, undermining, also undermining support for survivors. This cut strips funding from the very system designed to help survivors of violence. Pulling dollars from the office for victims of crime corrodes the safety net for the people who are already hurt and who deserve care, not abandoned. Also, good in local safety infrastructure. This decision removes millions of critical funding from the local safety infrastruc, infrastructure, sorry, infrastructure tool. The frontline people and programs that a community relied on is not just a budget issue. It's dismantling public health responses that saves lives. It is a costly trade-off because gun viol, gun violence costs the public an estimated $265 billion annually in emergency responses. Medical care and long-term harm. CVI programs prevent that damage at a fraction of the cost. Prevention isn't just in humans. It's cost-effective. So, I ask you please support and protect the community violence intervention. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Laura, and then Diana, then Gina.
Buenas tardes a todos. Buenas tardes, Alcalde y miembros del Consilio. Mi nombre es Laura Mozo. Estamos en apoyo para el fondo de One Long Beach CVI, programa de prevención de intervención de violencia que ha funcionado para muchas de las familias, evitando tener jóvenes fuera de drogas, de pandillas, y vandalismo. Sin educación y viviendo en las calles privándose hasta de la libertad, en donde solo ellos tendrían que ejerciendo deportes o actividades de aprendizaje y de bienestar social y emocional. Consideren los fondos, ya que si queremos un mundo diferente, necesitamos trabajar fuertemente para evitar poder perder más vidas inocentes que solo esperan tener una vida mejor.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Laura Mozo, and we're here in support of the One Long Beach CVI Fund Prevention and Violence Intervention Program. Such program has helped many families preventing young adults from being involved in drugs, gang activity, vandalism, kids without a solid education base living in the streets while they should be studying, practicing sports, being involved in learning activities, and exercising social-emotional practices. Please consider allocating these funds since we would, since if we would like to live in a different world, we need to keep working arduously to prevent the loss of innocent lives who just wish to have a better life. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Diana, and then Gina, and then Martin.
Muy buenas tardes, miembros del Consilio Municipal de Long Beach. Alcalde Rex Richardson. Mi nombre es Diana Norman, promotora de Centro CHA y residente del Distrito Dos. Me dirijo a ustedes para solicitar su apoyo al proyecto de intervención de violencia CVI. La violencia afecta a todos desde nuestros jóvenes hasta nuestros ancianos. Y es necesario que fomentemos, que tomemos medidas decisivas para abordar este tema. La violencia afecta a todos desde nuestros jóvenes. Les incito a que consideren seriamente esta petición y sean aprobados fondos necesarios para que continúe el proyecto CVI. Muchas gracias y buenas tardes.
Good evening, City Councilmembers of Long Beach and Mayor Rex Richardson. My name is Diana Norman. I work with, as a promoter at Centro CHA and a community member resident of District Two. I'm here today to ask your support for the Prevention and Violence Intervention Program, a vital project for the well-being of our community. Violence affects us all, starting with our youth to elderly, and it is necessary that we take the preventive measures to address this issue. I ask insistently that you seriously consider this petition and approve the necessary funds so that this project continues forward. Thank you so much and good evening.
All right. Thank you. Next is Gina, and then Martin.
Yes, I've been diagnosed with aplastic anemia and epilepsy. I'm waiting for, going on five years for SSI. My seizure is not controlled right now at this time. I cannot get a job. I cannot be employed. I have seizures at least three or four times a week. So now I'm in, currently in a homeless shelter, and it's the first to serve shelter. There's a second one I've been in where I've been assaulted, abused, and my complaints and cries for help have gone unnoticed and unacknowledged. It's not just a problem with me, there's a problem with a lot of different people in there. Some people are allowed to do what, and say whatever they want. They can make the rules as they go. There's a few of us, though, that are really struggling. And at this point, I've chose to go back on the street than to be in an environment where there is somebody who did admit to assaulting me while I had seizure and while I was unconscious. This has been reported to police, unfortunately. There was not enough evidence to go, I was unconscious when the episode happened. But this person is still walking around, walking up behind me and talking to me. Staff will not do anything about it. I've been complaining, complaining, complaining. It just goes unnoticed. I don't know, is something gonna be done with this problem? Not just for me, there's other people that going through the same thing every day. I'm not trying to, you know, pawn off my problems on somebody else, but at the end of the day, I feel like I deserve to be housed in a safe place where I can close the door and feel like nobody's gonna come and hurt me, attack me, assault me. Further pushed me this morning is I got up and I saw another female client there. Two black eyes, barely could see out of her, both their eyes were bloodshot red. What happened to her? Nobody has any answers. Nobody has any answers. She's in the same place that I'm in. I don't feel safe there, and I think something needs to be done about. There's gotta be a way for somebody like me, who's got these kind of issues, to, to be safe, to be in a safe place where I can close the door and not worry about who's gonna come in and do something to me or threaten me, harass me. This has pushed me into seizures at least eight or nine times in a row, where the paramedics had to pick me up unconscious. And all paperwork is there. No drugs, no alcohol. I have epilepsy. They're def- uh, defacing my name on top of that, everything else. I don't do any of that. Really upset about this situation. It needs to get help. I need help, bad. So I'm asking, please, something's gotta be done. It's not fair. It's not right. I'm not safe.
Thank you. So I, I would encourage you to talk with, uh, our city manager on duty, who can, um, point you in the right direction.
Actually, Allison King, our Health Services Director, is here, she...
Right in the back of the room. Thank you very much. All right, Martin?
Good evening, Mayor, uh, Mayor and people of the council. This is my first time I've ever done something like this. I don't got no notes like everybody else does. I'm just very blunt. So excuse me if I pause, stutter, whatever the case may be, no periods, no commas, you know? I'm gonna continue with, um, we call her Taz. And she's, I, I live there too. Well, I, I got kicked out. I got kicked out. But they, you guys need to, thorough investigation of that ABC shelter. You know what I mean? It's in North, it's in, it's in North Long Beach. I mean, there's various problems in there. I mean, there's things that, you know, I mean, I'm not being a snitch or a rat or anything like that, but when it comes down to me and my dog, when they start affecting us, going back in the street, not wanting to go back to the street, because we just came from the street, because I've been homeless for five years, five years. My sixth year, I, you know, I mean, I got up, I stayed in the shelter, but for some reason, that shelter has a way of manipulating people and just bringing up something just so they could kick you out, just, just to make room. For some rea- I have no idea. Every day is, you don't know what to expect the following day, the following week, or, or whatever. I just recently got there and the, the people in the evening, the morning shift, we have new, we have a new director there, and all of a sudden, y'all, she's starting to, you know, push the issue on dogs and dogs. I'm the only one with the pit bull dog there. Okay, they didn't say anything about not having no kind of particular, not accepting particular dog. They accept all dogs because they're homeless. But when it came down to me, because my dog was the last one there, because everybody else got housing, they are either that, or they just left it on their own and just went on to back to the streets, which was not right. That's why it's a shelter for, bro, you know? So now they were picking on me the whole time. At the same, at the same time, uh, the, uh, at the MSC, Ms., um, Ms. Betty Corales, she helped me into this, into that, that shelter, and she helped me with everything, with that, whatever necessities I needed for the dog so they won't have any issues with the dog. But the new director came in, a different director came in, and now they don't want the pit bull there. They're, they're, they're threatening me that you're gonna be, you know, we're gonna have to kick you out, this and that. I go, I thought you guys were here to help us, help me, you know what I mean? That's the, that's the whole point of purpose. So by Wednesday, I, me and my dog had to get out. But no, 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 excuse me. My dog has to leave. And she told me, don't you have a family? Don't you have, I'm homeless. What part of homeless does you not understand? I do not have family. I'm homeless. She insisted, and she just started make, calling her CEO, Trish, my girl named Trish, she's a COO, whatever, whatever, you know, I just know COs. I don't know if the COO is, you know what I mean? So, so I got to Wednesday to figure out what to do. I do, I do not want to go back to the streets. I don't want to go to the streets. I had, I have an opportunity right now at Goodwill. I'm going to classes for my, 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 my guard card. You know, the teacher found out about it. Anyway, the point is, I need help. If, it's gonna happen. I know it's gonna happen. They're gonna, they're gonna kick me out. But, but I need help on housing, somewhere where I could just finish my schooling, because it's two weeks, because it's a two-week course, a two weeks' course to get my guard card. That's all I need, is a two-week course, and I asked him, can I, can I just stay here for two weeks? No.
Sir, your time's concluded. Your three minutes is concluded.
All right, well, thank you for your time. Allison is in the hallway. I think when she's finished, uh, with the last speaker, you should talk with her about what alternative opportunities may exist. Thank you. Whoever puppy it is in the audience is very well behaved, by the way, I will say. Okay, all right. Yeah, cutie pie. I hear you. Thank you. All right, we'll continue with the agenda. All right, we have a hearing. Hearing item twenty-four, please.
Report from Public Works, recommendation to receive supporting documentation into the record, conclude the public hearing and find that it is in public interest to underground utility lines along Cherry Avenue between Fifty-third Street to South Side of the Ninety-One Freeway and adopt a resolution establishing Underground Utility District Forty-two, Districts Eight and Nine. There is also an oath for this item. If those who are testifying in this, if you can please stand, do you and each of you solemnly state that the testimony you may give and the cause now and pending before this body shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you. You may be seated.
All right, uh, city manager.
Yes, so for this presentation, we have Eric Lopez, Director of Public Works, and Keith Hoey, City Engineer.
Mayor, members of the City Council, uh, this is an item that we brought back a few weeks back uh, to, uh, talk about a proposal to underground utilities on Cherry Avenue. Uh, we, uh, we got authorization to, uh, perform the, um, the, the hearing notices and, and to do the hearing, and we're here today, uh, for that hearing. So, uh, the, the details are, um, as we've, as we've previously discussed, uh, we have some funds available through our, uh, partnership with Southern California Edison, uh, Rule Twenty-eight. Uh, these funds are exclusively, uh, for undergrounding projects. Uh, this program is, uh, sunsetting, uh, and we have a few years to go through the planning, design, and, and construction process and partnership with Southern California Edison, uh, to, uh, to underground. So, uh, we've, we've done the mailings. Um, we are now, uh, ready to answer any questions that the council may have, uh, or the public may have, as we work through a, a process that is a multi-year process. There will be multiple opportunities, uh, for, uh, for, for input and to, um, and to educate and inform the public on, on what this means. But, you know, this is a, a major effort. It is meant to have a major public benefit uh, through the undergrounding of, uh, major utilities on a major corridor. Um, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right, we'll now go to public comment. We have one member of the public signed up to speak, Dave Shukla.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers. Dave Shukla, uh, I'd like to state, uh, that I don't think this project is in the public interest, not as it is written, not at this time, and I think that it merits another hearing. First is the issue of allocations, and we're, uh, council members, uh, really understand, first, why the program was discontinued eleven months early by SCE, uh, at exactly twenty-one point two million. And then there's, of course, the issue of the current estimated cost through the, uh, rough order of magnitude assessment uh, that happens, just happens to be twenty-one point one million dollars, um, with, of course, a forty percent variance. Now, the question is, uh, since Public Works Capital Fund has already put a hundred and fifty thousand towards this, uh, is the Public Works Capital Fund going to be on the hook for that variance, or is that gonna be, uh, passed on to the ratepayers? And, uh, if so, uh, the city needs to recognize its unique role in the region, um, because of its partnership, so to speak, with Edison. It can prototype certain things that other cities simply don't have the ability to do. And especially in wildfire-prone areas, this very costly process of undergrounding is being proposed as a wildfire mitigation measure. Who should actually pay for that? The people whose business practices are sparking more wildfires, or the fact that long ago, when it was a public, uh, entity, Edison chose to make certain decisions over grounding large wires? Now, there's a bigger issue, uh, since this project was conceived initially six, seven months ago, the world was very different. People are really struggling with utility costs. Uh, sorry, I don't see the timer. Um, with rising costs generally, but especially ba- basic living, uh, cost of living costs. There's a substantial amount of residences in the project area. I don't know if an analysis has been done for what it's gonna cost them to come up to compliance as is stipulated must happen within only fifteen months. I don't think that timeline is fair. I think that has to be extended, even if it pushes the project timeline back, because, you know, you're talking in some cases, you know, two to three thousand dollars, four thousand, five thousand dollars, just to get up to compliance. Now, there's a further issue that's happened in other cities with a lot of these tariffed rate conversions, which is very troubling. And, uh, I, I'd like to note that the current resolution, uh, City Attorney's Office doesn't address this, the current city resolution, uh, on this item.
You have thirty seconds remaining.
Thank you. SCE, uh, often in other cities doing work, uh, infrastructure needed, repairs needed work, will assert that they now own, all the way up to a customer's meter and panel, they own not only that system, electrical system, but the rights of way connecting it to their system. Now, for this District Forty-two, this utility district, the city should be able to assert not only its governance rights, but also whose rights of way are, are being affected when easements, the issue of easements, uh, comes up. I, I don't think it's fair to automatically give rights of way, uh, over to this entity. Um, I believe it merits another hearing, and it should have more time for residents to come into compliance. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll take it back behind the rail. We have a motion by Councilmember Rick Odie. Councilmember?
Um, uh, Director, um, correct me if I'm wrong. I know there is a, um, a, a process for noticing the entities along that corridor of the impacts to their own electrical systems, what the undergrounding will mean for them, and any upgrades that are necessary. Could you talk to that process a little bit?
Yes, so, you know, our, the majority of our work for the project, it's a public benefit project, so it's in the public right-of-way. It is city of Long Beach-controlled right-of-way. Um, there were, obviously, there are connections, uh, to private properties. The, uh, the noticing, uh, acknowledged that if there is known a work on private property that needs to happen, and usually owners, uh, of their property know when they have, uh, those, uh, the, that work required, they, they have to finish it before, uh, we get to a certain point in the project. So they, they'll have fifteen months or a certain amount of time to, uh, do their known improvements that are required uh, so that we can, uh, we can proceed with, uh, with, with, with our part of the project. It's really few. Usually, uh, this is for, uh, mu- much older buildings and areas where there are, uh, major, um, issues with the electrical system. We don't expect a lot of these. Maybe there'll be a few here and there. We have to evaluate that. Obviously, I don't have information on private systems. You know, I have information on what's on the, on the, on the right-of-way, but we would be collaborating with Edison if they know of any, any potential, um, residents that require some level of work, then we can work with them to ensure they have, uh, the, uh, the ability to do the improvements by the required timeline. But this is not a project that's gonna start tomorrow or next month. Uh, this is a project that has to get designed, a very long process for that, uh, and the, and we have to do a lot of coordination with the community um, before shovels will actually hit the ground. So we have some time to work through some of these issues. Uh, we're used to working with these right-of-way issues. We do it on major corridors all the time.
Just for the clarity, the record, Councilwoman, the municipal code does require, I think this is part of your question, notification for the undergrounding process, and that's in Section fifteen point four eight point zero seven zero. And for the, the preparation of this hearing, all, um, identified property owners along the corridor were notified pursuant to the municipal code.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Entuck? Okay, all right. Um, we already did public comment. Members, please cast your vote.
Because the screen is not reflecting, I'd like to just read into the record that the motion was made by Councilwoman Rick Odie and seconded by Councilwoman Thrash Entuck. And the vote for the item... Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item twenty-five, please.
Report from Economic Development, recommendation to execute an agreement and any necessary documents with the California Government, Governor's Office of Planning and Research, California Volunteers to accept and expend grant funding up to two million six hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and forty-nine for the Economic Development Department, Long Beach Workforce Innovation Network, and Long Beach Youth Services Corp, citywide.
All right, just, uh, a few comments here. Of the past few years, we've developed a very fruitful relationship with California Volunteers uh, and, uh, California Service Director Josh Friday. This is Governor Newsom's arm that engages Californians in public service, volunteering, and civic action to tackle our state's most pressing challenges. Just last month, we co-hosted, uh, the Accord to Career Fair with California Volunteers on the Queen Mary. We have more than three hundred core members from across the state of California and dozens of employers and civic partners here in Long Beach. And our partnership with Calim- California Volunteers has allowed us to launch a number of, uh, innovative fellowships, including the Long Beach Public Service Corps. It is very unique. It is one of the first of its kind, uh, municipal corps in California. Uh, and we began this program in two thousand and twenty-three. It places local college students, Long Beach State, Long Beach City College, and Cal State Dominguez Hills into city departments, embeds them into city departments to get a firsthand, integrated look at public service careers and to encourage them to explore careers in public service. So this program is now in its second cohort. Uh, these fellows, uh, are, are embedded all across our city. We've seen, uh, folks from the first cohort find permanent jobs with the city and in other agencies. Uh, we ran into folks from the first cohort at SCAG and in Sacramento, and so i- it's working. Um, this second cohort was allowed to continue because of state funding, and this funding will allow us to continue this important fellowship program and other meaningful career development opportunities for local students and local youth. That said, there's staff report on this present, uh, staff report on this item.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Uh, city council approval is requested to enter into an agreement with the California Governor's Office of Planning and Research, California Volunteers, and accept and, and expect it up to two million six hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars in funding made available under the State of California General Funds to continue administering the Long Beach Public Service Corps program. This is, this will be the third round of this funding made available to the city of Long Beach, and all programs related to this funding will be administered by the Economic Development Department's Workforce Bureau, also known as the Long Beach Workforce Innovation Network, and will do so again from the contract execution through December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-six. This program will once again provide paid work experience opportunities for up to one hundred and fifty-two Long Beach youth between the ages of sixteen and thirty, helping to develop career interests and experiences in public service and high-growth industries. The LBPSC program aims to increase your employment, development, interest in public service careers, and build capacity in education, climate change, and food security. It will focus on engaging young people from Long Beach, preparing them for careers in high-growth industries, and connecting them with men, mentors, and real work, real work experience opportunities. Uh, the funding will once again support the following programs: the Public Service Corps Fellowship, which offers paid fellowships to college seniors from CSULB, CSUDH, and LBCC, providing experience in city departments and public service career development; the Fire Corps, that exposes young adults to fire, uh, fire service, emergency response, and disaster preparedness through hands-on public safety training; and finally, the Urban Planning and Design Program, which offers college students practical experience in urban planning, design, and civic engagement. Uh, this concludes my report. I welcome any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Uh, the motion was made by Councilmember Rick Odie. Anything?
No, Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Kerr?
Strong in sport.
Thank you. Councilwoman Zindejas. Get queued up. Hands up.
I did it.
Okay. All right. Public comment, Dave Shukla.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. I support this agenda item. Thank you for bringing it forward. I know that it was agendized prior to this month, but I appreciate that it is being heard today, given everything that's happening with the National AmeriCorps. I think these monies are sort of needed. Projects like this weren't around when, not only when I was in high school, but when I was in college or graduate school, interested in all these topics. And since the projects are supposed to be funded to advance capacity on education, climate change, and food security, I think it's a great opportunity for practical engagements with some of the real problems that, that Long Beach has, not only in its municipal dependence on oil drilling and oil revenue, but also with, you know, it's this kind of nexus with the electrical system and really with, you know, a utility that has not worked in their best interests over time, utility Edison, which, you know, has directly contributed to the limiting of their, their life potentials. So, I'd appreciate some honesty with not only these programs, but also with, you know, what one can expect 10, 15, 20 years from now in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, please cast your vote. Thank you. 26, please.
Report from Health and Human Services, recommendation to execute all necessary documents and any subsequent amendments with Centers for Disease Control and Prevention to accept and expend funding of $1,427,910 for public health infrastructure, citywide.
All right. We need a motion in a second. All right. And we're certainly glad to be able to accept and expend these dollars. We know it's an uncertain environment, so the fact that we can count on these dollars is certainly recognized and acknowledged. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment here? Seeing none, members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried 6-0.
Thank you. 27, please.
Report from Health and Human Services, recommendation to execute an agreement, all necessary documents with Los Angeles County Department of Mental Health to accept and expend Mental Health Service Act grant funding in an amount not to exceed $1,264,777, citywide.
Thank you. This is, this is more good news. We want to thank and acknowledge LA County for this important funding. It's going to support our Health Department's efforts to provide accessible prevention and early intervention of mental health services for transition age youth and LGBTQ plus youth at risk of homelessness. So, it's in alignment with two of our strategies. One is our focus on localizing mental health, and secondly, it's in line with our citywide goal of achieving functional zero on youth homelessness by 2030. So, this is good, and we have a brief staff report.
Yes, Allison King.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. We're excited to share this funding opportunity with recommendations laid out in the April 22, 23 report, establishing a robust mental health system in Long Beach, also referred to as our mental health report. We're happy to be here today to present information about this proposed project and how it ties into the goals and strategies in that report. Here with me today is Allison Walensky, our mental health program manager, who will provide you with a high-level overview.
So, as you may remember, in November 2021, City Council asked the Health Department to work with local mental health providers to examine the feasibility of establishing a more robust infrastructure for mental health services. The process began in May of 2022, and the report was released in April of 2023, a result of combined efforts of a mental health advisory group made of local stakeholders and the expertise of a consulting group. In the initial convening of the mental health advisory group, members anchored their work in the following vision statement, that in Long Beach, all community members have an open path to access and receive mental health support they need to thrive. And how do I advance the slide? Can you do your next? Sorry. Thank you. So, the recommendations and strategies laid out in the report focus on four key areas: treatment capacity, prevention, access to treatment, and then two focus populations: people experiencing homelessness and transition-aged youth. These recommendations and the strategies outlined in the report are the focus of the work of the mental health program within the Health Department. The state is undergoing a significant transition in its mental health system from the Mental Health Services Act to the new Behavioral Health Services Act. The new framework and the Health Department is actively aligning these strategic priorities to statewide reforms, funding changes, and housing and treatment expansions, while continuing to prioritize improved mental health outcomes for the community. The Department is, is proactively engaged in planning efforts, utilizing funding opportunities like Proposition 1, and ensuring Long, Long Beach has a strong voice in shaping the future of behavioral health services. Next slide. So, while continuing to monitor and adapt to these funding changes, the Health Department continues to seek funding to accomplish the goals that are laid out in the mental health report. The Health Department is requesting for Council to accept funding from the LA County Department of Mental Health, which would allow the City of Long Beach Mental Health Program to develop and launch specific community-requested resources and services to reduce the number of transitional-age youth who may experience homelessness for the first time, especially to individuals who have experience in the foster care system and those who identify as LGBTQIA2S+. Prevention and early intervention efforts are among the most effective strategies in mental health care, reducing the severity of mental health, mental illness, lowering long-term treatment costs, and improving overall quality of life. In Long Beach, these efforts are especially critical to improving mental health outcomes and reducing the likelihood that transitional-age youth and LGBTQIA2S+ youth experience homelessness for the first time. By identifying and addressing mental health needs early through this funding opportunity, we can intervene before crises occur, strengthen community resilience, and create a more equitable, create more equitable pathways to stability and well-being. As the state funding structure for mental health and substance use prevention efforts is being worked out, this is an especially important funding opportunity for the city. So, this is an outline of the proposed activities in the, in this grant opportunity. The activity is addressed three of the focus areas. In the mental health report, which is prevention, access to treatment, and the focus populations of transitional-age youth and people experiencing homelessness. This is our proposed budget for the grant, which would operate from the time of approval to June of 2026. Please note that this budget has no impact to the general fund realignment or health fund. In addition, the Health Department has requested a no-cost extension to add an additional six months to recover the time lost in the contracting process. Lastly, this budget may be amended to cover personnel costs for, for current staff rather than expanding this program in light of funding concerns in fiscal year 25. Thank you.
That concludes our report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any public comment here?
There's no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Members, please cast your vote. 28.
And I'd like to read into the record that motion carried 7-0. Thank you. 28, report from Human Resources, recommendation to adopt a resolution approving a letter of agreement to the 2023 through 2026 MOU with the Long Beach Management Association.
Great. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment?
There's no public comment on this item.
Members, please cast your vote.
Oh, sorry.
Motion was made by Councilwoman Rix Odie, seconded by Councilwoman Zindejas. The motion carries 7-0.
So, motion...
Motion carries 7-0, yes.
29.
Report from Human Resources, recommendation to execute an agreement with Evolution Risk for healthcare-specific stop-loss reinsurance coverage at an estimated cost of $1,905,592, citywide.
It's been moved and seconded, or is there any public comment?
There's no public comment on this item.
Members, please cast your vote.
The item has been moved by Councilwoman Kerr, seconded by Councilwoman Sorrow, and carried 7-0.
Great. Thank you. We'll now go to our closing public comment. All right. Looks like we have five members of the public signed up to speak: Jose N., Lori Logan, Dave Shukla, Sanai Kenfe, and Sandy Alvarez. If you heard your name, please come forward. All right, you can go first, Sanai. That's fine. We're just going to get on out of here.
All right. Appreciate it. Sanai Kenfe, 6th District President. Speaking today, a few months ago, you know, I was in a, I had a civic duty moment, as I always do daily, and I made a, and, and a journey on the Go Long Beach app. If there was a opportunity to count how many times in the city people are using that app, I think I'm in the top 10 percentile of that app. I probably use it about five to seven times a day. That being said, there was recently some graffiti on a property that I own, and, and typically with the gang graffiti, I just paint over it myself. At the time, I was on my way to work, so I used the Go Long Beach app to take a photo of the graffiti, and no response. Case was closed a couple of weeks later. Graffiti was still in the building. So, I said, oh, you know, clerical technical error. Let me try it again. I did it again. Couple of weeks went by, graffiti still in the building, case was closed. So, we did this cat and mouse thing for a couple of months, graffiti still in the building. And then eventually, I got a write-up, or I got a call first from code enforcement about how I was going to get cited for graffiti on my building. And so, at this point, I said, oh, man, you know, I, I can't liken this to clerical error anymore. I don't have paranoia, although my mother sometimes suggests that I do. So, I said, let me send an email. So, I sent an email out. Who, which department do I interface with in order to get this gang graffiti off of my building that I'm paying over $12,000 a year in property taxes in, right? And so, when I find out, nobody knew. Was it, was it code enforcement? No. Was it community development? No. Was it Public Works? No. So, I kind of, for months and months, it's been bouncing around. And then Monday, this Monday, I got an administrative citation for $100 to take the gang graffiti off of my building. So, I'm coming today. Ideally, maybe someone can direct me, deputy city manager, someone can help me to get the gang graffiti off of my building, because I've used Go Long Beach. I actually have an open, now this time, they didn't close the, the case this time, and I, I'm so thankful that I had the case number memorized at this time, because I've been calling so many times to get the graffiti off my building with no response. But I found out today, and it helped me a lot, because I found out today, it's through a private contractor. And so, I realized, because that was one of the notes, was that the private contractor said I couldn't get over the gate, right? As the landlord, I was surprised to learn I had a gate, because I've never had a gate on the building, so I still don't know how the invisible gate was keeping the private contractor from getting the graffiti off my building. But I'm hoping that someone here in the city can help me. I'd duly appreciate it. I don't want to spend $110 for the citation. Thank you.
Thanks, Sanai. What council district is this property in?
6th District.
All right. So, make sure you just connect with Suli. You guys figure that out.
Well, I hope so.
All right. She's right here. Okay. Next speaker, please.
I'm having problems at the shelter right now. It's getting terrible, terrible right now. It's awful. People are bringing drugs in the shelter. People are in and out of the shelter, don't follow the rules, don't listen to the rules, they don't follow the rules, and they don't listen to the rules. That's their choice. But once you don't follow the rules, they be kicked out, because I'm tired of getting harassed by the, by, by, by the rooms. Each, everyone has a room. Each and every one has a boys' room. Some people has a couple rooms, and some people are separate to the other ones, boys and girls, and the bathrooms. They don't even pick up their mess. Some people do, some people don't, and the staff is not doing their job right. Some of the staff is not doing their job right, not even checking on it or cleaning the bathroom, or checking on people day and night, partying all night. I hear it, partying all night, and it's ridiculous. I didn't get no sleep at all last couple of days, no respect for the shelter, no respect. And where's the staff? And where's the cop? I mean, come on now. This is ridiculous. I got to deal with it every day, in and out. We get blamed for, for everything, and we got to pick up everybody else's mess, and that's a goddamn shame, and no respect, no respect at all. And I got to deal with it every night, in and out. And people, oh, if you're going to do this, you do it outside the community, outside the area. The security guard is in right here, and the dog park is right here, and I'm getting harassed by, by this person harassing me all about my dogs, about my dogs for certain reason, or there, you know, no respect, no respect at all. I'm tired of getting harassed. No matter where you go, you get harassed. I'm tired of it. I'm tired of it. No respect for the shelter, or nobody, nobody follow the rules. Nobody's following the rules. Either you clean the bathroom or get some, a different staff, get a different staff. You got to get a different staff, get a different staff, or get a different person to come in, because this is ridiculous. I cannot deal with it all night, day and night. Last night, I was mumbling, bumbling, and I'm getting threatened by some couple, and these two couples, one on that side, one on the other side, and one on the other side. I'm, I'm just getting, I, I called by names, calling me a bitch, these two couples supposedly, and the other couples calling me names. I'm tired of it, and no respect, and no, and then we just had a meeting not too long ago at the shelter. We just had a meeting. This is ridiculous, and no respect. And they need some, they need another, you know, we just had a meeting not too long ago, and they're not following the rules.
Ma'am, your time is concluded.
I'm tired of, people are bringing drugs to the shelter.
Ma'am, your three minutes is concluded.
Well, Sandy, is it Sandy or is it Lori?
Sandy.
Sandy. Sounds, sounds, sounds like our team needs to look, look into this situation. Allison King is our Health Department Director. She's right behind you. She, she's available to talk with you about the situation. And thank you for coming down. All right. Okay, Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for letting me go last. As you probably noticed, I keep to my usual method, impromptu, just write it right in front of you. You know, you can examine the paper, like, you know, what I'm going to say. And I, you know, been wondering what I should say, excuse me, what I should say, if I should say anything in this kind of moment. Something I heard earlier today that struck with me is that we don't need to wonder what we would do under conditions of tyranny. Whatever we're doing, whatever we're choosing, there's your answer. Now, at the federal level, you know, maybe, you know, many of the wholly unconstitutional efforts, especially to irrigate data, personals, people's personal data to private uses with generative AI, machine learning, all the new toys, it's pretty scary. You know, the so-called Department of Governmental Efficiency has been anything but, it's been wholly illegal, corrupt, and very damaging, not only to this country, but to certainly my future, everyone's future. But at the local level, I refuse to believe that's true. I, I wouldn't come here if I thought you'd disappear my ass. Truly, you know, you know, if I were to end up in a box somewhere, I probably wouldn't walk into it. But I do think, you know, what we actually choose to do at the local and state matters, not just on my jam on climate change, but on how we want to live, on who we want to be in this moment, really matters. And I'd like to thank you all for putting up with me.
All right. Well, thank you for your public comment. We'll now move on to announcements and adjournment. I want to remind folks again, we have kicked off Long Beach's annual spring cleaning all month of May. Go to longbeach.gov/springcleaning to find a neighborhood cleanup in your neighborhood, or you can do, do your part and... or you can do, do your part, and you can sign up to host, uh, just add your event to the calendar. Uh, secondly, I want to take a moment to acknowledge, um, uh, the loss of Animal Care Services employee, Lieutenant Alfredo Magana, I want to close, uh, tonight's meeting, uh, in Lieutenant Magana's honor. Lieutenant Magana served as a LBACS, um, uh, animal control officer, and as a steward of the city for twenty-seven years. He cared deeply for animals, uh, as demonstrated by his commitment to the City of Long Beach and to this department. He was a pillar of kindness in our community, and was well-loved and highly respected by his colleagues. There's not an officer on the team that hasn't trained with him and, uh, learned directly from him. So Lieutenant Magana is survived by his wife, his son, his daughter, and his beloved pup Peach. He will dearly be missed, and, uh, and we express our sincere condolences to his friends, colleagues, coworkers, and loved ones. Next up is Councilmember Sorrow.
Yes, so I want to give a special shout-out to the Long Beach Poly Girls Beach Volleyball Team, because they won the program's first CIF Southern Section title this past Saturday, May third. Let's give them a round of applause, go Jackrabbits! One other thing is I have an event this Saturday, it's the Fourth Annual Long Beach Visat Day, which is going to take place here, the Long Beach, uh, City Hall, uh, to commemorate, um, Buddha's birth, enlightenment, and passing, and it's gonna be all day, so drop by anytime between eight AM to ten PM. Um, so, hope to see you there, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kerr.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, this weekend I invite residents to visit the hangar at the Long Beach Exchange. They have pop-up markets both Friday night, a Friday night market from five to nine, as well as a Mother's Day market on Saturday the tenth, from noon to five. Uh, similarly, Parkview Village has their second Saturday's block party on May tenth from eleven AM to three with a Mother's Day theme. Also on the tenth, you can embrace your inner artist in the Up in the Clouds Artist Workshop at Rancho Los Cerritos at one PM. You can join featured local artist Nia Simone, as she shares her work and provides hands-on tips and techniques for painting clouds. Uh, District Five is hosting two blood drives coming up in May, so mark your calendar, uh, blood is desperately needed, Friday, May sixteenth, and also Friday, May thirtieth, one at the Expo Art Center, one at Wardlow Park, and also it's beach streets this weekend, folks, this Saturday from eleven to five PM on the West Side. Uh, bring your bike, you can put your bike on a bus, if you don't want to ride all the way to the West Side, there's lots of ways to get there, uh, but come out and join the community, enjoy local flavors and local shops, and a great time in, uh, traffic-free bike riding, see you there.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Thresh Intook.
Thank you all, I just wanted to check in with you all, we've had a busy week and weekend, and I wanted to highlight an event that just occurred in the district this past weekend. Uh, our LBUSD celebrated the opening and ribbon-cutting of the Center for Black Student Excellence. It was at Lindbergh Middle School, we heard from incredibly bright students, parents, and educators, uh, who are looking to inspire our youth to strive for academic excellence. The Black Literary Society, which is a collection of high school readers, spoke about their experiences engaging the scholarly works of art, um, in our community, and it was really great to see our youth out tackling and thinking about big-picture items in literature. We also had the chance to welcome Dr. Sean Harper, he was the founder of the Race and Equity Center at USC, and serves as a professor there. I'm excited to see all the great work that the center will do to help our children succeed academically, intellectually, and professionally. I also want to take a moment, uh, to recognize and uplift our incredible mothers, grandmothers, and all the mother figures that are here, listening tonight as well. I want to wish everyone a joyful and love-filled Mother's Day, um, and want to make sure that the mothers, um, in our lives are ones, and even if they're not here, that we're also able to keep them in our memories and hearts. And for tonight, hi mom! Um, and this week is, uh, Public Service Appreciation Week. I want to extend a thank you to all of the colleagues, staff, and the countless people who keep our city running every day. These public servants fulfill critical roles in our community, um, all year long, and I wanted to extend my gratitude for all of your work and service. I especially even want to thank those who work on their birthdays as well, um, for making sure that they affect, uh, change in our city. May is so full of observances, you probably know, that it's Small Business Month as well, um, which celebrates the contributions of small business owners. Um, and my office will be working with local, uh, entrepreneurs, city staff, and others, uh, to put together a series of resources to be able to support, uh, those small businesses that both currently offer services to the city and those who would like to do so. So stay connected to make sure you get an update on what's happening in the eighth district, as well as what will be planning for Small Business Month, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmembers Zindejas.
Thank you, Mayor. I invite all of you to attend, um, the Wilmore City Community Association Volunteer Appreciation and Information Night, um, this Thursday, May eighth, twenty-twenty-five, at five thirty to seven thirty, located at Anna's Joint at four-four-three Pine Avenue. Also, again, I would like to invite you to the twenty-twenty-five Harvey Milk Equality Plaza Ceremony on Saturday, May tenth, twenty-twenty-five, starting at eleven AM, located at Harvey Milk Promenade Park at two-one-two East Third Street. Also, I would like to invite you to DTLB Alliance's Dance Downtown Revolution at Mosaic on the Promenade every Tuesday of May from six PM to eight PM, hope to see everyone out in the community.
Thank you, and Councilmember Rix Odie.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, um, I would like to invite everyone out to attend the Star King Neighborhood Association Meeting on Wednesday, May seventh, at seven PM. This meeting will take place at the Holy Trinity Church, located at two-hundred East Sixty-Eighth Street, Long Beach, California. Uh, second, I would like to invite everyone out to my office's next, um, District Nine Town Hall, that will be on Monday, June sixteenth, from five thirty to seven thirty PM. This event will be held at the McKinley Elementary School Auditorium, located at sixty-eight twenty-two Paramount Boulevard. Uh, if you need any additional information about any of these events, please contact my office at five-six-two-five-seven-zero-six-one-three-seven, or districtnine@longbeach.gov. Um, and to, to ditto, uh, Councilmember Thresh Intook, I would also like to, um, say happy Public Service Appreciation Week to all of our wonderful staff and folks that basically make our, our city run as well as it runs. Thank you for your service, whether it's your birthday or not, um, whether it's raining or not, or whether we're in a hurricane or not, uh, thank you for all you do.
All right, well, that concludes the meeting, thank you all for, uh, watching and joining us, and thank you to our incredible team and our, uh, city team and our clerks team for, uh, you know, helping facilitate. This meeting is now adjourned, thank you.